Call the Cascade Township Planning Commission to order for Monday, November 13th, 2023. This time, I'd like to record the attendance at Member Brunau is absent. If everybody could rise for Article 2 of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has one nation under God, in which there is no doubt, liberty, justice, and all.
Whoever is going to make a motion to approve the agenda, I would ask that you amend it to remove Article 7. Go ahead.
I would move that we approve the agenda with the removal of Article 7.
Rissy makes the motion. Support? Supported by Member Ringo. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We'll move forward. Does anybody wish to disclose a conflict of interest? As we only have McKenna, I would find it hard to believe that, no, anybody here doesn't have a conflict, but uh. Alright, hearing none, we're gonna move forward. Do we have any visitors online? None. Forward. Let's go to Article 7 now, Article 8, now Article 7, Master Plan Amendment. And I will ask the McKenna team to come up and give us a presentation.
Oh, we need to approve the minutes.
Did I miss that? Alright, can I get the motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Member Ringo.
Support.
Member Ringo moves to approve the minutes as they are. For Rissy, supports. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, now we will move forward to the new Article 7 Master Plan Amendment.
We're gonna hear about this one next time.
No changes.
That was in honor of Member Brunau.
Yeah. He's not gonna be happy.
I bet he's watching right now. He's saying something about that probably.
He said that he would be in attendance if he could, or not in attendance, but viewing from the zoom.
Well, it's on the record now.
They even got the travel mics so they can walk around and talk to the room.
Yeah, apparently the, I wasn't picked up on the minutes before. Neither was that, but.
I feel like, yeah, I'm Robbins if I did that or something.
I'd like to see Chris like walk around like Oprah and try to take questions. I'd like to see that too.
You know what? In this room. Some of you were in this room 18 months ago when we had that strategic plan open house, and I think I did do that, walking around the crowd, you know.
Is it not popping up?
Uh-uh.
If you do presentation, does it?
Um, it's a Word doc.
Are you gonna tell us your favorite things, Chris?
Is this our new ninth member?
You get one and you get one.
That's Disney, huh?
It is, yeah. And my, that's my daughter at Disney. Everyone knows.
That's cute.
We just went to Disney. That's where I caught COVID. Um, I don't know if it's.
Can you do like a presentation view or something?
I don't know.
It's license.
Those two screens. That's odd.
The try.
Um, so when I said it.
Again, people can. Just feel like shit definitely learn or something like.
Now we know. Next time. Did, um, Ayush? Call or text you?
I mean.
Ayush Patel from our office who's an urban designer is gonna be here as well to watch the discussion and gather an understanding. So he can put some of these things into, you know, graphic visual format for the document.
Try speaking to this. Um, so as you guys recall, the last couple of meetings, we were talking about the future land use plan draft, our future land use map draft, um, as well as the mixed use designation. So, um, there's a recap here in the first page of this memorandum and second page of the memorandum that kind of just ties into above the discussion that we had with regard to the um, new proposed mixed use designations for the master plan, um, the first of which being 28th Street mixed use. Um, with a 2.5 or two and a half story maximum, uh, for building height permitted land uses would be retail, commercial, restaurant, medical, and office. Um, and no density bonus here would be permitted. Um, residential note also would not be permitted. Um, the star triangle mixed use, again, two and a half story maximum, um, that equates to roughly six units per acre. Um, this would be allowed by right. Um, permitted land uses include office, medical, residential, and light and industrial. Um, with density bonuses permitted from a silver status, which would allow up to three stories maximum or seven units per acre. Gold status, which equates to four stories or eight units per acre. Um, Glenwell Hills.
Question real quick about that, and it's just a thought. Should we make that 3.5 and 4.5?
We could.
I mean, just the reason we did 2.5 was so that they could have a.
Sure. I think that's an interesting idea. I also, which I hate to see more density. I question if the eight units per acre and four stories is practical or if we're.
Should go higher.
I don't know.
I know that trustee Nordhook had some concerns about the, um, the fire engine capacity. Are you, are you comfortable with, you know, putting the requirement that they pay for a ladder truck?
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Okay.
They wanna go that high, they need, we have to be able to service that building and we don't have the equipment to do it.
Anything over two is gonna, like, we need to make sure whoever's building this document, that the first one over two is gonna have to pay for a ladder truck.
Okay. I mean, I think that we have that as a gold.
Uh, I would say something like, I mean, cause I mean, I would.
Buy the whole truck to you? Or do you buy like?
I think the first one can buy the truck, the next one.
But they have to buy something else.
Kind of view.
Yeah, right? See, I've been emulating.
Second one can buy another truck. So that'd be a real rush here, I'm sure.
So the current buildings that are taller than that are served with a, an agreement with Kentwood, is that correct?
Correct.
And, but they're stretched to their capacity.
But, yeah, we can't keep adding on to that agreement.
And we put a lot of buildings in the four corners area that are very tall. I don't know if you've driven down there, but there's, there's a lot of heights over there.
For sure.
Did we ever find out what a new truck costs?
Two million.
You get a truck.
So I guess the, my question with that is, uh, you say there was a $500,000 payment and that was put into the agreement with Kentwood. Would that help their capacity or is that like, is that still just a quarter of a truck that's not getting any use to anybody?
Quarter of a truck's not gonna fight a fire.
Got it. Okay. I'm seeing.
Yeah, my concern about that, and I mean, I like the idea, right, but I think it's kinda, you hose the first person through the door, right, and then second and third and fourth people after that. I mean, they get to reap the benefits and the first person pays for it. I'm not saying they don't pay something. I'm just saying they don't have to buy an entire truck. I, I, we can do whatever, right? I'm just saying like, you know, the, the barrier to entry is gonna be high on this thing and that's the cost of doing business for the first one, right? And we, I don't know another way to do it. Like, that's the problem, right? Because it's like, we can't build a fund like Kentwood's saying no more, right, Timmy?
Correct, yeah.
So.
And the problem is too, that once you have that truck, in 20 years, 30 years, you have to replace that truck. You're gonna need that $2 million again, plus interest. So, I mean, there's gotta be.
Inflation.
Right. It's not like you just need to buy it the one time. It's gonna be an ongoing thing. So there has to be a creative way to, to make that work. And maybe it's we need to go back to Kentwood and say, hey, we're gonna try to migrate away from leaning on you, but we might need your help.
Do they charge us for anything, anything? That might be interesting. Cause that's what I was thinking as, I mean, just spitballing here, right? 500,000, right, and 300 goes into a fund to buy a truck and 200 goes to Kentwood. And then the next person comes in and does 500 and three in, or three and one, or four and one, whatever the numbers are, you know? And so then after the fourth person has come in and developed, we now have enough money to buy a truck. But we're still shoveling some money to Kentwood to help us out until we can buy them. You know what I mean? And that, that way it's a little more equitable.
It spreads it out.
Right. And then the, and guess what? The sixth, once the truck's paid, guess what? It's still 500 grand or whatever the number is, and that just goes into the fund, goes into the fund. So, yeah.
What about building that into? Um, the township fund donations and calling it a fire surcharge fee?
That's kinda what we're thinking.
And, and, and split it up and pick a, pick a number, whether it's 100 grand for each developer that comes in and wants to do this. Make sure we spread it around and it, it doesn't sound like, you know, buy a fire truck. Something a little bit more tangible and even.
Have you spoken to chief majors? That might be a.
We can, sure.
Might be a, a next step. What do you, what do you think, Timmy?
He's willing to come to one of our planning commission meetings and speak to the subject if you would invite him.
I think, uh, we can either invite him or I think perhaps we can ask her if we can have it there. They have a nice facility now.
They certainly do.
Yeah, so it'd be a great opportunity to have it there. So, but I, we need to talk to chief majors to figure out what the feasibility is. And I suspect he has meetings with his counterparts in various cities, right? Like, let's understand this. I think this is predominantly Kentwood because that's who we share a border with for both of these, but.
Yep. Well, I think understanding the details of the agreement with Kentwood.
Right, that's my point.
And what, yeah, and what, what they mean by at capacity and how we can help build that capacity without lump sum payments that are enough to buy a whole new apparatus.
Right, yeah.
If that's possible. And in the meantime, I think we could just, we'll put it on the list here and kinda tag it with for discussion. You know, if we're, if we're talking, well, we aren't, we haven't gotten there yet. So let's explain, maybe we should explain what our proposed system is here, because the idea is a point system. And you, you add the points up and you either hit silver or you hit gold or you don't hit any. Um, so there may be some opportunity here where it's, you know, per dollar of donation, you get, per $100,000, you get three points or something like that. So, uh, we can.
But they get to pick what they donate?
But if you don't hit the, if you don't hit the limit, then you don't get any density bonus. So there's no real point in getting, getting three points worth of fire surcharge if you don't get any density for it, right? So that's the, that's what we have to work out.
Have you seen this done before with this particular problem?
With fire? Um, when I've seen it happen before, it's been one, actually what we were just talking about, which is one big use. Um, and when I have seen it, it hasn't been residential. It's been like a hospital or something like that. That comes in and is like, yeah, we're a hospital and we're gonna be seven stories because that's what we need to take care of patients. And then the community says, but we don't have a fire truck for that. And they say, well, we're a massive healthcare organization and we'll figure that out, you know? Um, but that's, so I have seen that worked into PUD agreements, um, directly because, and on that sort of level. Um, but that's usually, it's usually a big sort of community transforming, something like a brand new hospital or an airport or something like that. Which you guys also obviously have, but they take care of their own stuff.
My concern is I don't like them picking, what if they say, well, listen, I'll just do a parks and recreation fund and I don't really wanna donate to the fire and we still want to have a fire truck?
So it needs to be a threshold thing. Like, it's this and.
I just don't know what they should pick, right? Like.
If it's a threshold, it takes it out of that. He's saying you put that up first.
Oh, so you have to, you have to, okay, yeah, okay.
It's like a, yeah, it, it's a minimum is you have to do this plus.
Okay.
You have to then also get 15 points.
Okay.
We can do it that way. Kinda open here, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, so the table below lists proposed point values and just above it, it shows silver status or gold status. My thought process on this is that the, um, total number of points needed should be significantly higher, in my opinion. Because I'm like, oh, I'll just make a pathway donation and then I get my gold status. And I'd like to see him have to hit more than one item to get to, I guess it depends on, on how big the item is too. I mean, I'm thinking, I'll buy 100 feet of sidewalk and I'll get gold status.
That's what I'm saying. Each point, you know, so 80 points instead of eight and 150 instead of 15.
Yeah, we can also, but we can also lower the points that you get. We can also, I think especially these fund donations, we can make them build, right? Based on, right, so we said, greater or equal to 15% of the total value for one month's rent for all units combined. Well, what if we make it one point per percentage point or something like that? And you could also cap it. So it's like, you can only do this up to X, something like that.
Well, no, what about taking a page like out of the Boy Scouts, right? You have to earn this merit badge before you go on to the second one. You have to donate two points here before you go on to the next one where you have to donate two points. Then you have to go on to the next one to donate two points. Then you go on to the, you have to, those are the tiers. These are the ones that you have to donate to first before you can get to the bigger ones.
And we could, we could develop something like that where fire is, what's tier one is just fire or something like that. And then tier two is some kind of, is farmland and pathways and parks or green space, excuse me, pathways and parks. And then tier three is more of the onsite stuff and you have to choose from each bucket and hit, I'm intrigued by that idea.
So if you're hitting all the lower ones, you're automatically a silver. If, if you hit all the lower ones, but now if you hit the lower ones and one of the bigger ones, now you're gold or something like that. You know what I mean?
Right.
Makes sense.
Now, can you scroll down a little more so I can see the bottom one?
So is this density bonus categories chart here? Is this something that they would be choosing from or they just, like, money goes into a pot and then the township divides that up through all of these categories?
Right, they decided. The developer would propose it as part of a PUD agreement and then I guess this kinda depends how we write it. It's either, well, they hit their, they hit their number, so they get it, or they hit their number, so.
They'll be considered.
They'll be considered. You could write it that way.
I'd like to see those bottom two categories be negative. So if you have less than, if you have one to 9% condos, you get a 10, 20 point deduction.
I mean, that's, that's doable. And that's, by the way, why we have this as a Word document tonight, because we're.
Not much is zero.
We're here to.
That means you're putting up apartments.
Yeah.
So I want your apartments to get clipped by taking negative points here.
I think the 30 to 40 should probably be zero. And then the 10 to 29 is negative and the one to nine is.
Negative.
The bigger negative, right? Just. You hit a balance and then you go, and then you go negative. What's wrong? No, I think that.
Zero is zero percent.
Oh, there is a zero. I didn't see that. Well, unless you were hiding that page. Oh, now she reveals a zero.
Well, if, if I'm being honest, I, I feel a little bit like, maybe we should take a step back and, and figure out like, what, what is the overall goal of this? Is the goal here to achieve the type of development that Cascade Township wants? Or shut the door on new development and put on parameters to make it very difficult for a developer to put in anything.
I don't wanna be.
I just want it to be targeted areas.
I wanted to be fair, but I don't wanna be 60,000 year, uh, resident community.
Totally agree.
Okay, so I don't want all apartments either.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just kind of like presenting some food for thought to kind of make things realistic in a way that they can still be achievable. That would still open the door for development and not necessarily say, yeah, well, we have these parameters for development, but really it's just the township doesn't really want it at all. But we kind of feel like we have to have it. Does that make sense?
I think it does, but I think what you're saying makes sense, but I, I, I disagree in the sense that these developers will pay.
Okay.
Does anybody disagree with that? No, and if they won't, then go to Kentwood.
I mean, if it hurts profit.
Cause we don't want the business. And do we all concur and agree that fire is our top priority and then the rest comes from, does anybody disagree?
Okay, so then maybe the tiered approach here does make sense then. If that's going to be the first priority.
The fire, yes.
Fire, yes.
Yeah, or pick, pick from, pick from these buckets and one bucket is just fire.
I think, no, no, I think you just say tier, yeah, like tier, first step is you pay five points into fire. Second step, you pay four points into whatever and then three points, two points and then one, and then boom, you're silver. Now, if you want to pay 15 points into something else, now you're gold. Yes, climbing the ladder.
I feel like up at the top where we have like the 15 point ones, um, if we could look at that again real quick.
Sure.
So those are, and I would assume the fire surcharge fee might be another 15.1 perhaps. So those top four are the most, I guess, important. Um, so then I would take these condo owned units and not have a 15 for that, like lower all of those by like two points or something like that. Because 100% condo owned units is not the same as a fire surcharge or a green space preservation fund. It's not as valuable to the township.
No, but if. And that goes to the tiered again, right? Because the, the donations could be tier two and the condo thing could be tier three.
Right.
Yeah.
But here's the thing, Rob, if they have to equal, and again, I'm just telling you, 45 points, right? And they've got, uh, 50% condo, so they got 10 points and they've got the ones that are mandatory. Well, there's another 15, so now they're at, you know, 25 points. Well, I can't just do one 15, cause that doesn't get me to my 45, so I have to do two 15s now. You know what I mean?
So you're saying up the total points for the gold and silver status or whatever it was?
Yeah, so, so that if they have lower on the condo owned, they're gonna have to do two of the big 15s to hit their 45 number instead of just, you know what I'm saying?
So then, do we wanna double it or more than double it, are you thinking?
Uh, so I would, if it were me, I would say, um, I would do, um, so I would do it so that, uh, the surcharge, the fire, the onsite open space, the internal site paths and the internal external site pass, those, uh, what is that? One, two, three, four, those four equal 15 somehow, right?
Oh, I hear you.
Right? And then the magic number you have to hit is 45. So if you had 100% condo owned, that's 15. You get all those four, that's 15. Then you do one of the top three, that's 45. If your condo owned drops at all, you're gonna have to do two of the 15s.
And I'd like to see a penalty point for every apartment.
Did we determine?
I think, I think if we, if we.
Sorry.
Did we determine if we can block apartments?
We have apartments.
I, I appreciate that.
I reached out to legal counsel again yesterday because I hadn't heard anything.
Can you copy me on the next correspondence and I'll?
Help would. Do we all agree that those top three things are equal to each other? Like, to me, green space preservation might be more important than a Parks and Rec fund donation. I don't know. How did we have come to those three things being equal?
Yeah, I, I, I think we'd have to figure, figure out the number value and then figure out the total points that you need to hit certain levels, right?
Uh, let me, maybe this will help. You guys obviously put a lot of time into this point system. Did you borrow this from somewhere else? Is, I mean, is that how you got these numbers? Is, is by looking at someone else's point system? Or how did you, how did you come up with the, the eight and the 15 and the, I mean, is that just, you guys just brainstormed or, or did you? I, my reasoning for asking is not to put you on the spot. I just, I, you know, oh yeah, so and so uses that system. They've had it for 15 years. It's working great. Or they just adopted it last week.
Yeah, no, this is, this is new.
Okay.
Um, and, and we've done things of this nature before, but this is more comprehensive than we've done. But what we were going for here is, and, and this is, I'm, I'm honest about this, not the feedback we're hearing from you guys now where you wanna make sure that everybody, that their, the bases are all covered. We had developed this more of a pick and choose, but we're here and let's cover all the bases, which is fine. And I think if we, we can develop something like that with the tier system of you, you must pick from this bucket. Something like you have to hit 45 or maybe it's 60 points.
Whatever.
And you must hit at least 15 from this category, at least 15 from this category, maybe at least 10, 10, 10, something like that. And, and, and then again, the fire thing is like, it's worth 15 and you must do it because it's the only thing in its category and you must get 15 out of that category, right? So something of that nature. And I do think it makes sense to say, hey, when we can do a tiered thing like the percentage of condos. And it's like, well, the, the top level percentage of condos is gonna get you a long way along the path. But if you're not, you're gonna have to make that up somewhere else. And I, I don't mind the bottom of that being negative. You know, such that the zero percent level is at like the 30 to 40 or the 10 to 20 and everything below that is negative. Um, though I, I don't know that it should be like hugely negative. It shouldn't be negative 15, like negative two or something like that. But, yeah, I think that, that makes sense. And then, um, I, you know, I think we can develop it from there. One thing we really do wanna know from you guys tonight is how important the things on this list are to you. And we're getting some of that, right? Like, fire is hugely important. Green space, very important. Condo percentage, very important. There's other things in here that we can either remove from the list because you don't think they're important. Or we can upgrade to, this is required. It's not part of the point system. It's just required.
Right.
Um, so, and, and I think that there are things that we're not super comfortable doing that with because you can't, from our perspective, we're not comfortable banning apartments. If you get, legal counsel says otherwise, great, but, you know, something like that.
I don't even see mine here, but, I mean, you could do negative points for apartments.
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
More stuff on the other list.
Yeah, and, and I think that you, you probably do wanna discourage having like a nominal amount of condos just to hit some minimum. Oh yeah, we're gonna sell the penthouses, everything else is apartment. You wanna, probably do want to discourage that, right? So having less than 10% condos being negative, there's logic to that.
So, just so I'm clear, if, if folks aren't reaching for bonuses here, they can still build apartments that fit within the parameters of all these mixed use designations, correct?
Just, yes, because I, I don't think we can, if we allow residential units, our working assumption, until we hear otherwise from legal counsel, is that if you're allowing residential units, you have to allow people to rent them out if they want.
So as long as they comply with these hypothetical mixed use designations here, they can put apartments in here. At the maximum stated under each one of these categories.
Correct.
Period.
Yeah, this is just strictly speaking if they wanted it.
Yeah, it's that two and a half story, six units per acre, right, that is like the cap of the by right allowance is what we said.
So.
So it, it looks to me like this chart really should be like, uh, I shouldn't say like, infrastructure and amenities, right? So some of the points are infrastructure based and some of them are amenity based. And when I look at the amenity based list, uh, as far as things to remove, I don't think we need to give points for fiber internet just because I think they happen to be in the, in the area where there's internet versus, uh, where there's cable as opposed to fiber. Um, just my, my thought. I, uh.
Unit laundry and dishwasher. Yeah, we, we gonna find a place without laundry and dishwasher.
Same. Yeah. Why, let's go through the list. First of all, this is great.
And unit laundry is one we don't.
Very cool.
Right, maybe I have a conflict there, but.
I hope it works.
Yeah, I think, I mean, of course, there's gonna be some refining that will happen, but, um, again, this is just the first pass of this draft and we'll workshop it.
It's very cool.
Um, so I guess we'll just start at the top if that's, makes the most sense. Um, so green space preservation fund donation, pathway fund donation, parks and rec fund donation. And now we have the, the fire surcharge. Any other? How do, how do you guys feel about this? Do you, is there anything that you would like to see here added to this fund donation list? Anything removed?
What about funding for the DDA?
Or do they take care of that on the other side?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay. Take care of their own.
I would think. They'll, they'll collect some absurd percentage of the taxes on these things. So, yeah. Um.
I do personally, again, think that the fire surcharge fee and the green space preservation fund donation are above all the other things on the list and important.
Okay. I'm just gonna.
Well, I would say the parks is too, you know?
Yeah, and especially if we're having all of these new park target areas and working with Melanie on figuring out how we wanna refine what that map looks like through the master plan. Maybe that's something that we wanna put a little bit more emphasis on is that building that base for parks and rec, the future of parks and rec.
Yeah, I mean, cause green space is great, but if nobody walks on it or goes there, then it's just land, vacant land, right? I mean, like, I'd rather have a park attached to it or in it somewhere, you know, that people can go and enjoy it, right? Not just.
It comes down to the definition of green space too.
Yeah.
So, um, I think you start splitting hairs when you try to give one of those 16 points, one of them 13 points and another one 11. I just, it's pretty subjective. To me, it makes sense the way you guys have done it.
Yeah.
Sign 15 to each. Um, and if we need to rebalance within a budget, we can certainly do that. Um, I'm, I'm struggling with how we fit the surcharge in here because that really isn't in the same category. Because it's a mandatory piece. It's a threshold piece, right?
Like, that's what we, yeah, I think that's the consensus, yeah. So it's, it's its own bucket. It's own, it's tier one. The, the other three are tier two. It's kind of what I'm hearing.
I don't know that it's a point thing.
It, it just absolutely must happen.
Just a mandatory.
That's a good observation.
Cost of business.
Just a fee. By your service.
Percentage of the project.
Yeah, and we can do that. Maybe this is what we're trying to do with the other donations is scale them to the rent the developer is anticipating collecting. Which is tied to both the density and the price.
Okay.
Air Station 3.
Okay.
Timmy's ready to build.
So the.
Let me get down to those onsite.
Wait, hold on. Did you have a question?
Rose's point value.
No, I, I think, I was just thinking out loud. So the fire service fee would be that tier one. Actually, that would almost be like a. No, I, I think, I was just thinking out loud. So the fire service fee would be that tier one. Actually, that would almost be like a, get you in the door.
Yeah, that's.
And then aside from tier one.
Yeah.
That's like, it's like little MasterCard commercials.
Yeah.
Right? Like, green space fifteen, parks fifteen, fire priceless.
Right.
Not really under density bonus.
It's, it's right, yeah, right after your, your hundred percent, you're on your hundred percent condo owned, it's fire service fee.
And I think.
Application fee.
Yeah, I think the fire service fee is if you're building over two and a half stories.
Yes.
You're gonna pay a percentage of the project to the fire service and let's talk to chief majors and identify what, you know, understand what those options are and you can come back to us with a proposal.
It's good idea.
And then I, I'd like you to use language like could and will consider, um, these types of things, right? So these aren't thresholds that once they do it, that they're, you know, getting rubber stamped, right? It, it, it's still, we're gonna, we're gonna look at it, right? Because if we don't like how, I, I can't tell you how many people yell at me about that darn car wash on Twenty-Eighth Street, right?
One that actually washes your hair?
What's that?
Scott loves.
I go there. That's what washes my car.
I love it. My point is this, like, I, I wanna be able to, to still, to, to, to push back and say, no, that, that doesn't fit what this community is looking for.
It didn't need to be bright red, right? That's kind of the idea.
They're gonna claim it did because it's their branding.
It, well, but that's, that thing is the kind of thing that you guys as a premier community are in a position to push back on.
Yeah.
Right? You, you don't necessarily need to take the corporate architecture. Now, that's what the architectural review committee is gonna work on. Um, and that'll come before you, hopefully sooner rather than later because, um, I think that is an improvement.
All right, so what about pathways foundation?
I think that's very fun.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I use it, so I'm kind of.
Is, is, is there anything to, you, just for instance, green space is fifteen and then pathways and parks are seven and a half each. So you pick one or two.
I wouldn't worry about point value yet until we come up with a total number, right? Because I like the whole, hey, if we're short here, then you're gonna have to do two fifteens. Cause, and that's gonna put you at fifty-five, but you only need forty-five, but you, you know.
There's no other way to.
There's no other way to do it.
No other way to get there if you're under.
You know, that's the way to, if they wanna do seventy percent condo owned, well, then you guys to pay to play.
And you got thirty apartments, you just lost thirty points.
That's right. So, yeah. So I mean, I, I, the, the points will, I mean, we gotta figure that out.
Yeah, well, I think once we understand your priorities, then we can work that way. I think we're getting there.
With respect to pathways, I, I'm questioning the wording here that we have. The, the first line is internal site pathways and it's a two. And then the second one is internal and external stuff, site pathways and it's a four. So are we saying then if they had internal pathways and they built some external pathway, they really could get six?
I don't think that's what we meant, but I understand, I, I appreciate you pointing out that it could be ambiguous.
I mean, don't get me wrong, as, as being part of the pathway committee, I'm all about the pathways, but I, uh, I wanna make sure that.
No, they're gonna have to have external anyway if it's there.
Right. I'm, I'm wondering if we just need one line.
Well, I think there's, so, uh, maybe we need to describe this a little better because I think we're going for is, but the two-point level is supposed to be, all right, within my development, there's pathways that my residents can walk on. But I, the four-point level is supposed to be, I have built a pathway that is part of the township pathway system that everyone can walk on, even though it goes across my property.
Okay.
Here, here's my concern is that we currently, if somebody came in, would require them to do all of this without giving them any points.
And, and that's actually one of the things we wanted to hear.
So I, so I'm, so I'm, I wanna be, and, and again, it all depends on what the grand total is at the end, right? But I wanna, I wanna make sure that we're not just throwing points out on things that, that we require anyway. I mean, obviously, uh, so, some of that is okay to, to an extent, but I don't think, I don't, I don't think we need to give away the farm here.
So, no, but again, what's the total point value?
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
You can give them some freebies and give them some points.
If this raised. Yeah, if the total is fifteen, then I would, then I would argue that, no, we don't wanna give them two points for internal site pathways because we would require it anyways. They're gonna work a little harder to get to the fifteen.
So what do you guys think of the idea? And instead of using a point system, we could use a tiered system and all of these things are listed within each tier and you have to say, must have four items from tier one, four items from tier, or actually would be like tier three, four items from tier four, five items from tier five or whatever. And so these like dishwasher appliances that will be, you know, low on the, on the totem pole, but, but they'd have to pick like six of those in that category to make sure that each of these unit, units have some sort of like minimum quality, just a thought there. So instead of the point system.
Now, when it comes to unit laundry, dishwashers, I mean, unfortunately, but I think, I think it's not required by the building code.
I think that anything, oh, anything that's gonna be built with, with, with what we're talking about doing with fire, fire burn donation and stuff, is probably gonna have those appliances. I don't think we need to worry about that.
Well, just as an example, like something that would be relatively simple, low cost, a pool, for example.
Yeah.
So that would be part of like a lower tier, which you would say, maybe there's five items in that low tier and you say you have to do four out of these five. Okay, next step, now you have to do three out of these five, you know, and then it just kind of builds up aside from the fire.
I, I see where you're going with that. I would be okay with that, but I, I really liked the concept of once you got below fifty percent condo owned.
The, the offsetting.
The offset on the points, I liked that. And, and I feel if we go to the tier method, then uh, you're getting away from the point method. It might be harder to steer that, but.
That's fine.
Discourage the things we don't want in this township. Hotels, I want negative, negative points on hotels. I don't care if you give them a thousand negative points on a hotel. You may build it, but you gotta shop this list to make up for what.
Ten ladder trucks.
Same with apartments. We don't really want to encourage more apartments. We have plenty. But if you wanna build them, you can, but you gotta make it up on this list.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's what we're going for.
Points, I'm taking points away from.
Right.
Okay, so I'm here.
That's what we're trying to do. Number one is develop properly and keep things out that we don't want. I don't wanna be Kentwood. Kentwood's got a very bad reputation within a lot of rental properties over there. We don't wanna be that.
The other thing I'd like to see is I, I don't prescribe to the percentage of monthly rent. I think they'll bullshit how much the rent is.
Right.
I'd like to see a percentage of the project cost.
Okay.
Okay.
Ten percent feels good.
Ten percent?
Yeah, and the other thing, and you, and I'm not bashing you, you said it a couple of times. I don't like, here's a list of ten things, you have to choose six. No, no, no. We tell you what you're choosing. If you wanna get this level, these are the things that need to be hit. You wanna get to this level. These, I don't like somebody else.
That's the language, like.
I know.
We may consider, so we can, when we consider, we can say, we really, thanks for the pathway, but you're gonna do green space.
Okay.
Like, that, that's why I put that.
Yeah. I just don't wanna say like you have to choose from one of these five and they choose the three that you don't.
Proposal, but, you know, we'd like to see him end the proposal.
Okay, okay.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That, that was the intention with the language.
Okay.
I don't want to, um, extend the conversation here, but can we have a line item that, uh, applies points for a, um, redevelopment of a, perhaps a township identified property or something like that? I'm just thinking, let's say down the road, uh, there's a hotel or something that's, that's abandoned, right? Uh, you know, and we wanna see that property get redeveloped. I'd like there to be a way for the township to identify a site like that as.
Renaissance.
Yeah, it's just something, you know, I mean, maybe it's a, a, some office buildings, but there's gotta be a way for us to easily say, you know, this area is, is, you know, we want that to be a, a, a target area and that would bring so many points that.
So, so I picture that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'd picture that is that you'd have something in the, the lists that says you get X number of points for developing on and we come up with a name, priority redevelopment site or something like that. And then later on or elsewhere, it says, the planning commission shall have the power to designate priority redevelopment sites by majority vote or something like that. And then you could be like, well, we're gonna put this one on the list because the, because the hotel went out of business, right? We're gonna put it on the list. It's now a priority redevelopment site and now, or you can reserve the right to remove it from the list, right? Oh, it's been redeveloped, we like it, move it from the list, you know? So like, I think that, that would be kind of an interesting tool that you can use. Um, that you would have like this flexibility. We could write that right into the zoning, that you have the flexibility to designate that and then it becomes a point value thing. Again, because we were, I think there's a lot more flexibility with this kind of thing because we're offering bonuses rather than required, like some of this stuff.
I, I think part of the, the challenge is that, uh, there's this notion that we don't want any development at all. And I think the reality is that we just wanna be smart about it. We would encourage it in certain areas and discourage it in others, like say, you know, out in the, in the, uh, in the countryside, so to speak. So, uh, you know, having that, having that ability would be good to be able to promote it more in the areas where we want.
And I do like that because I think we're gonna see more empty office buildings in the future. Could be.
That whole triangle should be considered a, a, I'm gonna call it a renaissance because that's what they call it down, downtown Renaissance zone, right? So you call that the Renaissance zone and you get fifteen points for just developing there, but if, if you drop below, uh, eighty percent condo owned, it's negative fifteen points, you know, or something like, you know, so we're encouraging them like, listen, you can't take this and make apartments out of it, right?
Alan, a minute ago, you mentioned that if the developer were able to just choose off of this list.
Yeah.
I guess I have a question about what you were saying. Did you mean like, let's say there were three different developers trying to do three different developments?
Hmm.
And we as a township kind of wanted these top three things hit equally? And what if all three developers said, we'll do the parks and rec fund only? Well, like, do we have the power to distribute this? Uh, the fund donations the way that we see fit, or do they choose?
And that's where I think Chris, that's exactly what my concern was, is they're choosing what they want instead of us getting to choose what we want. And but Chris said, when they come to us, we would kick it back to them saying, listen, we appreciate you doing the green space, but we really, we really strongly encourage that you maybe relook at this and pick parks and rec instead. Cause I really don't think the developers care.
I was gonna say that if it's the same amount of money, I think the developer would be like, we'll put it where you guys.
Yeah, you just tell us where you want it, right? So, um, but that was my concern, was that they would be picking what they want instead of picking what we want.
I, again, they're not gonna care.
Yeah, I know. No.
Which we will consider. We can amend and say, hey, this is what we would approve.
But I guess my thing would be to go through the list and is there anything like the fire that you don't have a choice? Like, you have to pick this.
Yeah, let, let's keep rolling on.
You know, go through the list and see if there's anything that like has to be here.
So did we reach a consensus on the, the condo owned percentages?
I would say.
I guess I'm, I'm still not clear exactly.
I think fifty to sixty-nine is zero and anything below that is negative.
With that.
I might even go higher and say seventy, anything seventy percent or lower is zero. I don't know. I mean, I.
That's, that's what the fifty to sixty-nine category is.
Sixty-nine percent. I, I, yeah.
But then a hundred percent shouldn't be fifteen anymore either, right? That should all be lowered as well slightly.
Well, I think you wanna encourage them to get there, right?
Again, I'm not worried, I'm not worried about that because once we get some of these, we figure out the numbers and figure out the, where it needs to be.
I mean, I do think to Timmy's point, I think you wanna, this is kind of the inverse we were talking about, but I think you should make a hundred very valuable. Even if ninety is not almost, you might, you might consider going fifteen and then ninety to a hundred is five.
Right.
If we make it twenty, to punish them for the first apartment, you know?
I mean, even if you make it fifty, it doesn't matter if the total number's a hundred and fifty.
Right.
We do have to get the total number.
That's what I was gonna, about to say that we have to figure out, I think, that first and then work backwards.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think we understand this, the general, this is what we want from you guys, is that prioritization, right?
The average unit size.
Wait, but hold on, thirty to forty-nine should be negative five. Nope, up one, right? That should be a negative five or whatever the number is.
Negative seven, negative nine.
Yeah, just, just put, you know, negative ten, negative fifteen. I don't, you know, whatever you want.
But seventy to eighty-nine shouldn't be ten, right? Like, you wanted that lowered as well.
Uh, the, the number, I don't, uh, we'll, we'll figure those numbers out later. I, I think we just, we just, we know what's positive, we know what's negative. We just gotta come up with a total number. We gotta play with the math.
Yep.
You wanna encourage ownership, you wanna discourage.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I like what was said on the hundred, uh, and I'm, again, I would put like twenty in there, just, just, and again, these are just earmarked numbers. But hey, you do a hundred percent condo owned, you're gonna get a big, big jump.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I. Even from ninety.
Yeah.
You're gonna get a big jump.
Reward and not just punish.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, right? So whatever, whatever that number would be. I, I don't want it to be two points more. I want it to be like more.
Sure. That makes sense.
Cause that, I think, encourages the development that we want.
Then can we make the zero bigger than negative twelve?
Well, yes, that would be negative.
I just threw one number in there.
Let, let them come back to us.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, I think we got the idea. You want the scale broadened, right? So the hundred is good, really good, zero is really bad.
To, to help with time, the questions are, do you like it or don't you like it?
I like.
You do like it, should it be large, medium or small in terms of points? And then they can come back to us. Does that make it easier?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So average, average unit size, hundred and fifty, do you like it?
You scroll up again. I'm just doing some quick math.
Up, how far?
Just keep going for me.
Fifty, so, but wouldn't that mess with the, so then they have, they would have less, uh, units per acre? Then.
Building's bigger.
Because of the building's big.
Yeah. So they're making bigger units, right?
Right.
This applies only to condos, not to apartments.
Couldn't say that. It could apply to any of it.
No, I think, I think you're getting hit for doing apartments to begin with. And if we want, if there are apartments, I think we want a big. Right? Yeah. So, that's what we're going for is separating those things out.
Do y'all like bigger units?
Fifty percent bigger for four.
No comment.
Points away for a second, like, do you like bigger? Is, is it valuable to us? I'm not getting a sense of this.
I, I, I don't, I, I'm, I'll let, let somebody else speak on that one. I don't.
What is our architect? Affordable too, though, right? I mean, as people.
I like bigger, uh, apartments.
The architect likes a bigger.
Condos.
Yeah. All right.
I, I have no opinion on that.
I have no problem with having a, a bonus for an increased size.
So if we were to do a bonus for increased size, uh, raise your hand if you're thinking small. The options are gonna be small, medium and large. So small, raise your hand.
Wait, what, sorry, what?
Point size would be small, medium or large for larger units.
Small.
But see, I think for a hundred and fifty, maybe medium, but for two hundred, large.
What does everybody else think of that?
I guess I didn't follow that. You're saying total?
No, if you're a hundred and fifty percent larger than this, than the minimum, you get a medium point value. If you're two hundred percent larger than the minimum, you get a large point value, whatever.
A small and medium, but that's, but that, that's fine.
Yeah, or small and medium, whatever.
What do y'all think?
I, I don't, I don't know that I, I'm, I guess I, I'm not sure that I, I feel the need to, um, regulate that.
Yeah, I don't see it either. It doesn't matter.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Who, who thinks we should regulate it? Raise your hand. Okay, let's remove that.
What's the minimum required?
It's, it's, it, it.
Madison was the minimum unit size for multifamily?
I believe it's twelve hundred.
Twelve forty-nine or twelve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bedroom units.
Two-story, I think it's thirteen fifty.
Do we care about bedroom units?
No, I don't care.
Does anybody feel that we should regulate? Raise your hand if you think we should regulate bedroom units.
I think that three-bedroom would be a good idea.
It does make a difference, I feel like, unless like suddenly someone's trying to make three super tiny bedrooms. Typically, they're not. And usually a two or three-bedroom apartment is a lot different than a one-bedroom or a studio.
But they're, so should the statement that it should be, sorry, that, that, that it's, what percentage of the units will have three bedrooms versus two bedrooms? I think Scott was going to say.
I was gonna say, what if we just said three plus bedrooms gives you so many points? So there's an encouragement to jump to three bedrooms as opposed to.
Timmy was saying as well. So, all right, small, medium or large?
Small, medium, real large for what?
Number of points.
Oh, oh, um, I think that's a, a small, medium number. I don't think that's a large number.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
There you go.
So you do like a small for the two-bedroom and a medium for the three?
No, 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 you do, you do a small if you get over three.
Say the three, okay, so the two comes out.
The bathroom thing, I don't even think you need to address, but that's my opinion.
Okay. Alright, um, let's go, let's just go through them, alright, so the bathrooms we're gonna take out, the pool, playground, sports court, is that something we feel that we should regulate?
I think that's fine to have in there, I don't know.
So if we're gonna have it, does everybody agree it should be in there?
Yes.
Alright.
Small and.
Small is what Joe says, raise your hand if you're good with small.
Small.
Small, small. Let's go to clubhouse with rental space. We all agree that that's something we should have?
Now, when you say rental space, you mean like they can rent the clubhouse?
Yeah, yeah.
Event space, maybe change to event space, yeah.
Talking like RV storage or anything, right?
Yeah.
No.
Alright, Ralph likes it, does everybody like it?
Yeah.
Storage, negative fifty.
Alright, Ralph, should it be small, medium, or large?
Small.
Small, does everybody agree with small? Raise your hand if you agree with small, there we go. Arcade bowling alley.
That should be a medium for a bowling.
I don't think that should be in there.
Not in there at all.
Timmy says strike it, raise your hand if you agree that it should be stricken.
Agree.
Strike it. Rooftop deck.
Strike it.
Yeah, Timmy says strike it, raise your hand if you think we should strike it.
Unless we have cigar smoking.
That's gonna go well.
Alright, the uh environmental design.
I I would love to see an incentive for lead, and and there's, there's a bunch of different levels of lead certification.
So we can make that a scale.
Based on silver, gold.
Yeah, so I think it's, yeah, certified silver, gold, platinum, I think is what it is, so we can. Do a two, four, six, eight or something, whatever the, yeah, something like that.
Okay, so Joe suggests that that we should have a sliding scale based on the lead uh certification.
Question, do they have to do any lead? It's not required.
It's not required. It's not required.
So, no, but I mean, it's an incentive.
Uh no, that's what we're saying, so is everybody, alright, everybody raise your hand if you're good with Joe's plan? We got a majority, thank you. A gym, do we think that gyms important?
I mean, I do, but I, you know, but there's other gy-, you know, there's gyms that people can join, so.
Okay, anybody else have an opinion on it?
I think, I think it, uh, I think it is, yeah.
Okay, so.
Quality of life.
Joe says small, raise your hand if you're good with a small gym.
I'm fine with small.
Alright, there we go. Co-working space.
I would strike this off.
What do you mean by that? You mean like, like the job share, um?
I was doing some reading that that's gaining a lot in popularity.
It is.
It is, for sure.
When people are doing remote work, but they have a small unit, then they can go downstairs, they don't actually commute, but they have an office, something like that.
Right.
So the only downside I see with that is traditionally people would go to, you know, Panera, Starbucks, all that, and so instead of them going to the local businesses and spending their money there, they're sitting at their, you know, workspace. Yeah.
Sure, also often in other communities, when you make like a larger, you know, lobby or co-working space, like. You then make the apartment smaller, because everyone's mingling in like the shared space.
That's clearly what the developer who brought it to us was suggesting. If you remember that, like they said, they're gonna have all these big spaces, that's why they have small apartments. Does, does anybody feel strongly about the co-working space?
I would remove it, strike it.
Balconies, patios for all of the units, do we think?
I think that's a nice feature.
Okay, what size should it be, Timmy?
I have no idea.
Small, medium, or large?
Let's give it a medium.
Everybody agree with medium, raise your hand.
So you do have an idea.
Me- medium patios it is. Additional windows beyond the building code minimum for all units, and I think that all units is an important part. Does anybody think that that's important?
Are we really gonna be able to identify if? They're doing that, I mean, is that an easy?
Be part of their.
I'm looking at our architect here and I'm asking him what his thoughts are, I think that's something we don't wanna get into.
No, I I won't get into it.
Ralph suggests we strike it, does anybody have a disagreement?
I I agree, I don't think whoever's sitting in Madison's chair, whether it's Madison or someone else, is gonna wanna have to do that either.
In in-unit laundries, all units, do we think this is important?
I'm okay with that, but I think that six points is awful high for.
So do you think it should be a small laundry, Timmy?
Yeah, I think it should.
Gonna do that and that.
Yeah, I don't even think we need.
Don't look at that as a bonus, because they're gonna do it anyway.
If they're gonna have apartments, like the kind of apartments we would want in our community are gonna have in-unit laundry, we don't want much of laundromats popping up over by my yard.
Do you wanna make it a hard and fast requirement?
Jeez, alright, we used to have a laundromat by the DNW, but. Town township wasn't willing to.
Those are some sketchy people, smug people.
So to me, that's larger than a small incentive, I would think, because we really want that.
Alright, we got, Timmy suggested it was a small laundry, Rob is suggesting a medium, is that what I'm hearing or a large?
Large.
I would suggest it's not even there.
Well, raise your hand if you support Timmy.
Are you, is Timmy small?
Yeah, Timmy's small. Alright, now raise your hand if you sm- support Rob.
Oh.
I didn't raise my hand because I was, I was for nothing.
And are you good compromising with medium? You guys good compromising at medium?
Medium it is.
Like I said.
I think you're giving those away.
Alright. Anybody feel strongly about this?
No, I, same thing, I don't think that one should be there either.
And if you wanna strike it?
Yeah, it's strike.
Stricken. Fifty percent larger kitchen beyond the minimum code for all units, architect, is this easy to do?
To enforce, strike that too.
Yeah, no.
Ah alright, Alan says strike it, raise your hand if you agree with Alan, stricken. Package lockers, this is interesting.
Another thing that I can't, I'd noticed as I was reading about new innovative things for high quality.
Well, and it's, a bunch of boxes aren't hanging out by the doors. Forge Pirates, yeah.
Well, so my daughter goes to Davenport and they have a Amazon locker there, and so the kids just order it, and they go up and they scan their phone and the door pops open and there's their package. But Amazon, I I don't, I I don't know if Amazon puts that there or if.
There's one in the DNW as well.
Yeah.
It's a separate company that runs it, but.
This is not forge pirate friendly, so. You're good with this one, what size should it be, Timmy?
I would give it a two anyway.
Joe calls it a small, everybody who agrees with Joe's small lockers, raise your hand? Okay, there we go.
Oh, now here's my question, what else should be on this list?
A great question, Alan, what do you think should be on it?
We have nothing in there about.
Here's how we're gonna do this, somebody puts up a nomination, somebody supports it, we vote on it, it's that quick.
I think when you look at apartments around Kent County, there's a huge difference between the ones that have a built-in garage that looks like it's in the front of the apartment compared to a carport.
I was just gonna say that.
So Rob makes a motion for built-in garages, Scott supports it, raise your hand if that's something you think we should add some points to.
Okay, or or like the covered carports at least.
You have negative points for carports?
Let's come back, let's come back to the second, the garages, Robert, what what size point allowance are you suggesting?
I'm not sure, but.
Timmy, what size, what time, what size point, and now, would you say here?
Ma- Madison is her hand up, she might have.
I don't know if it matters, but I do get a lot of building applications at the condo associations for them to enclose the carports fully.
Yeah, I, let's come back to the carports, but I concur.
Let's go with garage, uh, medium.
Alright, if you support media, uh, Timmy's medium garage, raise your hand, okay?
Can I throw a suggestion that in attached garage versus detached?
I think we said. But let's make, yeah.
That's what I meant.
Okay.
Yeah, it has to be.
Alright.
When it's like in the front of the apartment with the driveway, it looks so much different than just.
And then, and then the carport, a M, uh, a negative, or is that?
Okay.
We're gonna get negative points.
So Scott, Scott makes a motion for a negative carport point, uh, do I hear a second? Second, raise your hand if you support Scott's negative carports, okay?
So it's suggesting to make that carport more completely uncovered, or even completely uncovered even worse or something?
Yeah, yeah, fair enough.
What about dedicated bike storage space?
Okay, Joe makes a motion for dedicated.
As opposed to having somebody, you know.
Yeah, no, I I like it.
Lock it up to their.
Do that as chairman, I'm gonna do it, I like it, alright, uh, all those in favor of bike storage, raise your hand.
Uh, do you mean like?
Enclosed.
Bike storage, Joe, should, what point value should that be? Small, medium, and large?
Small.
Small, everybody support Joe's small bike lockers.
If it's connected to a path, could it be large, not kidding?
Lending machine, not a coffee maker, um, and what else?
Did I get my negative points down here for apartments? I don't see that.
Uh, well, that's like where the con- condo owned scale comes in.
Yeah, it is, it is on there if you want to.
For not having, the way it's written right now, it says percentage of condo-owned units, and then the the lower percentage you go, the more points you get.
I think it flipped to negative at sixty percent?
Sixty-nine, sixty-nine and under, is sixty-nine and under was the balance, and then under fifty, it went negative.
We we also said that a hundred percent would be like the maximum and ninety-nine percent would be like. A half or a third of the maximum, so like, i- it's the very first apartment drops you a bunch, it doesn't drop you to negative, but it drops you a bunch from go a hundred percent.
Go back up to that. Right, we'll see it.
I feel like Alan mentioned that maybe we should go even lower with the seventy to eighty-nine, and I agree, because. I mean, if you had seventy-one percent. I mean, that's almost a third that are not what we're going for.
Yeah, draw line somewhere here.
But here, you're still giving them ten points for having thirty percent apartments.
These numbers are changing.
I don't like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I would put small, medium, and large, small on that one, medium on the one above it, and then large on the. That's what I would do.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna see, again, we're here to.
Yeah.
Plan our community and what we want, we want to encourage, what we don't want, we want to discourage. I don't see the discourage on.
Is is there anything we have to take into consideration, and I'm specifically thinking about the triangle, I. Build a nice condos, some families move in, they wanna go to Forest Hills, bus service.
There's no bus today for us, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I thought you were talking about something else.
We're talking about a bus, what do you, what do you?
Like, like, i- is the, is, will the school service, or will those people have to drive their kids, or will they be?
They have to.
That's what I would think, but.
Today we had to drive.
They also get nine hundred dollars per kid.
Cancel the bus route.
General, generally.
Like the school bus, not the grata bus.
That's what I'm talking about, it's canceled.
They they have to provide transportation now, to answer your question.
Okay.
Now, with the shortage of people and.
My thought was, if there, if the, if there was the, and they were gonna charge the township for that, then we needed, that needs to be in the service.
I don't think that they charge.
Are we sure that they have to provide transportation? I feel like if you look at the Forest Hills Public Schools district map. There's a few apartments at the corner that they. You know, the southwest corner, there's an apartment building that's designated as eastern.
There's a.
Difficult.
There's a state law that after, if the resident is so many miles, I believe, from the school, which I think it's like a mile or two, the district has to provide transportation.
Sorry, I was unaware.
No, no, no.
That's why I asked, cause I was.
That's why it came up, it was a very hot topic a couple of years ago, when we had virtually no buses for most of the school year. I mean, you have it for like three weeks, and then you wouldn't for two, and then you would for three, kind of a thing, and that came up in conversation quite a bit, that they weren't.
Alright, any other ads, these have been, these are awesome ads.
I just wanna go back to the, so the way you have that written at seventy percent. You actually get a bonus, and then at sixty-nine percent, you have a minus medium?
I've, I'm just putting placeholders until we figure out the number, basically, these are my notes to say. We have a large reduction for these percentages, we have a less of a severe reduction for these percentages, we have a less for severe reduction for these percentages. And then, small plus, medium plus, large plus.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Cool.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other ads?
I'm trying to think, I'm not, it's been so long.
Coming back, so, so think about it.
What about a dog park?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, uh, Scott makes a motion for a dog park, Alan supports it, all those in favor, raise your hand for a dog park. Okay, Timmy, what size should the points be? What, me, small, medium, or large?
Small.
Raise your hand if you support Timmy's small dog park. There we go.
What about us, what about?
Maddie?
Do you know Subaru dealership on Twenty-Eighth Street has one?
We do.
Yeah. We approved it.
Yeah, approved it here, yeah.
I, what about, uh, what about garden plots or a community garden area?
Like, community garden, alright, so Scott makes a motion for community garden, Ralph supports it, what size should it be? Ralph, small, medium, or large?
Medium.
Medium, does everybody support Rob's medium garden, raise your hand? Got a majority.
All of this is. Yeah, I.
Any other ads, we can go into the other.
I think a rooftop, now that I'm thinking about like a rooftop deck would be pretty cool. But I don't know if it's, it's, but it's not a requirement, but it's like, hey, if you have it, you get some points.
You know, when you look at the newer developments in town, a lot of them have that.
Yeah, you look at downtown Grand Rapids, it's so cool when you're driving downtown and you see people hanging out in the summertime.
If I may, my son lives in downtown Chicago in a townhouse with a rooftop deck. It's the best place in the townhouse.
Yeah.
Go up there and overlook downtown Chicago, it's great.
I think it should be, I think it should be in there, but.
Okay, so. Alright, so Alan makes a motion for, to add the rooftop back.
Sorry.
No, no, Ralph supports it. Uh, Scott, which side, which side should it be, small, medium, or large, would you support it as well?
Oh, I think that's probably a medium.
So, alright, anybody who supports, medium rooftop, raise your hand? Here we go.
We're all dreaming here, right? Okay, uh, I had another one, and then I forgot it.
Maddie, would it miss anything?
Arena.
I just didn't know if you needed any more attention to parking.
What, what'd you say?
I didn't know if any more attention to parking should be, but I guess.
There's a planner right there. Parking.
I just think parking lots could take up a lot of space.
Per unit, so we don't run into an ADA situation over here.
I know Scott likes wider.
I do.
Well, you know what else is like, like, uh, maybe, because I was thinking about trees, right? So maybe we do a a parking in trees, like the parking lot out here, oh, you have that nice green grass and a couple of trees, it's not just a big, open.
Well, that would be required by zoning.
There's buffer yard requirements and things.
Parking lot islands.
Um, I'm not certain.
I mean, that might be something that.
Ratio of square footage should lot number.
We already require.
If you.
Number of spaces.
Yeah, okay. I was gonna say, if you don't, we could incorporate that into this and make it a requirement, because I really think you should.
I think you should too, I think it would kinda add some green, add some trees, but you have to have trees in that parking lot island, it can't just be.
My other question is gonna be if they propose a mixed use, because I think we currently allow mixed use.
I was gonna.
On Twenty-Eighth Street, if they're presenting something with commercial on the bottom, that would also increase parking, so I don't know if that would affect incentives.
I think there should be an incentive for mixed use.
Hmm, I agree.
If it's in the right area, I mean, I just, I'm not saying that we should have a mixed use on, you know, Butrick, but, um.
Depending.
But if it's in the right zoning district, I think I'm mixed, promoting a mixed use, especially if you're gonna get into a multi-story building. Uh, we talked earlier about those small office spaces or something, I think we took those out, or I don't know if we left them in, but, um, that's the kind of thing you see sometimes in a mixed use. I think the parking thing will sort itself out, because we have an ordinance that basically requires a certain amount of parking from our space, so I don't know that we need to. We could give points if they're on the, if they exceed the minimum required parking.
Okay, I just wanted to see trees in the.
Yeah, it's what you just said, like in that, so there are some apartment complexes over in the Granville area. That like, one of them is. There's several buildings and it's just a, an extensive endless parking lot, like surrounding them all. And then there's another one a mile down the road that has a building, a parking lot. And then like woods kind of separating it from the next building and parking lot, is that kinda what you meant?
Yeah, or, or just out here, if you come in, like, just where we parked out here, you know, how there's those, those islands with some grass and. You mean a tree or two, right? It just, it's not just a big open asphalt parking space, it, it, at least. Gives a little bit of.
I agree.
So, pre, tree preservation.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
I would love to incent by pervious surfaces.
Ooh, I like that.
Really would, um, in, in terms of parking areas. Um, and I would put that in a medium myself, but.
Okay.
Previous, uh, previous. No, previous.
Oh, did I spell it wrong?
P E R.
I do that every time.
Joe, Joe, does lead certification do anything with parking surfaces or anything too? I wonder if that would.
Don't know that it does.
Okay.
I think that's separate, but you, you remember that it does or doesn't?
I don't know if there's points for that, there probably is.
I thought there was, but I haven't looked into the details recently.
There is, there's. reduces, uh, water runoff.
Yeah.
But I would like to have that, if, if they don't wanna do the lead certification.
Just in general.
Yes.
Um, something else we had discussed too, but this might, eh, like. Be more related to the green space stuff, but we had talked about like environmental. Um, like river cleanup fund or something like that, so I don't know, just food for thought there that I recall in a township board meeting I sat in. I don't know, maybe a year or two ago that there was discussion about there being debris in the river. Maybe someone was complaining about it, I'm not, I don't really remember what it was exactly, but, an idea.
In our case, we could use PFAS cleanup.
Well, I was wondering about that too, but then I thought that was kind of already under control. Or, or that the township had a plan, I should say. The township had a plan for how to address it, rather than you.
Well, township only has a plan to service the water for the residents that are affected, but I mean.
Oh.
If you look at all the foam in our river, it looks like a washing machine. So, I think.
Serious problem.
Yeah.
I don't know how we would wrap that into this practically.
That's fair, it was just something we had discussed.
Yeah, no, no, I think it's valid to bring it up.
Appreciate bringing it up.
And you guys are addressing it in the master plan with your land use plan and the airport greenway and saying we're not developing in that area and that kinda, which is. Again, not solving the problem, just mitigating the consequences, but. Do you wanna do anything about, uh, charging stations for electric vehicles?
Good idea.
I don't know. Okay, so Alan makes a motion for charging stations, isn't it?
Could be.
Ralph supports it.
Giant windmill.
I don't know, maybe solar, whatever, I don't know.
And what, Alan, what side, what, how many, you wanna see that small, medium or large?
I don't know, I would think that would.
Well, hold on a minute though, cuz I don't wanna see big windmills and solar panels hanging out out there.
Charging station, which would.
It's a charging station.
Yeah, I'm like.
Somebody else has solar panels.
Oh, and I'm, I'm talking about for electric vehicle.
Alright, if it's just the charging stations, like with Meyer.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd be open to that.
If you support Alan's smallest charging stations, right?
Um, I think two, three. I have a question about that. In theory, I support it, but like I would like to see, I mean, are electric car sales still going up or have they plateaued already?
Depends on the study rate.
Yeah.
Probably depends on the month.
I guess I support it.
Just like.
Then the winner, they don't do well.
Yeah, the, um, you, you guys also remember are gonna highly encourage, uh, indoor, uh, excuse me. Uh, connected parking, which is to say your electric vehicle charger is just gonna be in the garage. In the garage. It's not gonna be a separate thing, you can see, it's just gonna be part of that garage.
Visitor.
Yeah.
Kind of long distance.
And that's.
An electric vehicle.
True.
And he's gonna charge it before they go back.
That's true.
Have a couple of external stations. You wanna have a speedy.
Everybody's batteries go down, we're gonna need more parking.
Yeah, a lot more caddy.
Um, did we assign a, uh, small, medium or large to parking lot landscaping?
I would say medium on that one for me personally.
I think it depends on how much.
Medium parking. Yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, we kinda, that's one of those things we already require a certain amount of.
Compare it to what we.
So, a greater amount then.
Require a hundred fifty percent more trees.
Yeah, a hundred fifty percent.
Yes, there we go.
Yeah.
Alright, what else? I wanna, I, I mean, they can, we've given them food for thought, remember this is like a.
Right.
Workshop, let them, and there's nothing that prevents a member from this commission from emailing Chris or Danielle with ideas and. Um, throwing out.
We, we didn't add mixed use on that list, is that something we were considering?
And, by the way, um, we can, we can email about this particular topic, right? We're not, it, it doesn't fall within the same public meeting in terms of, we're not deliberating, we're just throwing out ideas like that, that there's nothing wrong with that.
When you say mixed, well, like, what are you, what are you thinking? Commercial on. It's like commercial on.
Thinking, yeah.
Okay.
Exactly, you might have some. You know, condos up above kind of a thing.
Yeah. Rooftop.
Not apart, roofs, not apartments, I'm not talking apartment.
Rooftop bar?
What do you think, I mean? Mixed use, you comfortable with that?
Oh, you know where it's gonna go.
Where's it gonna go?
It's gonna go right to apartments.
Oh, we got that big negative up there for that.
We don't have any negatives up there.
Can we say mixed use non-apartment?
Mixed use, commercial. Uh, the, the, if, yeah, it makes juice, but you don't get the mixture's bonus if you're not a hundred percent condo owned, we could, we could tie things together like that.
What if a live-work building where somebody, you know, an accountant buys it and they live up above and then they, or barber, you know, he lives up above and then he's got a shop down below.
Those are, well, sometimes those are leased, I guess, but.
Another thought I had too, though, is that it doesn't necessarily have to be vertical mixed use, but it could be horizontal mixed use.
Yeah.
Like, for example, Allendale has, granted it is more student housing, but like, they have like. Townhome units in the same development within, like, there's like a small pizza shop. That's within the development and it's not in the same line.
About like two and, what's that called? Um, but not far from here.
Yeah.
So, something like that could be.
Which I like, I mean.
I do too.
You know, coffee shop, pizza shop, whatever.
Was that Calvaron, I think is what it's called, or?
Sullivan?
Sullivan, thank you. Newtown, yes.
Corner of Nap and Lefingwell.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Um.
Have you seen that?
So we weren't.
Oh.
What's the point value of that?
By LaCarri's kind of?
Yes, that's the same development as LaCarri's, that's exactly where I was, that's where I was getting the idea. And in that development, the back is single, the back is, there's like.
Italian.
There's single family homes.
All, all.
And then there's several condo buildings. And then up front is, uh, kinda towards the middle front part is live-work buildings where the people live up above and then they. They work in the lower unit and then in the very front is just strictly commercial where, uh, Crush Grape is LaCarri's.
That's an eastbound line in Lefingwell?
No, that's at the corner of Nap and Lefingwell, so it kinda be behind Celebration Cinema, that development.
Okay.
There's an amphitheater there, they've got a pool, they've got gar, uh, garden plots out there, a dog park.
Under apartment complexes, granted if the township has approved in the last five years, it's one of the nicest. It seems like they're really adding apartments up there quickly.
So of this mixed use, what point value would we give that? Small, medium?
I don't know, cuz it kinda depends, you know, a little bit like, Timmy said, you know, if they're doing apartments, then I think that negates it. Um, so it might be, it might be something where we say the planning commission will consider additional points for mixed uses. And then we leave it kinda open, open.
Why don't we let them?
Oh, maybe you guys.
Come back.
Yeah.
And then we can, again, we can tie two things together there if we want.
I mean, if, if somebody's gonna come in and develop a large, redevelop a larger or develop a large area, I'd, I'd like. To encourage something cool, kinda like that Celadon concept, and this would be a good way to do that, but if we don't throw these. Advantages out there, we're never gonna, we're never gonna attract, especially with our. Fire department donations, stuff we want, we're never, we're never gonna attract that. Nice.
Cool. Or remember, creative development, we just changed the fire donation to being over two floors too, right? Like, that salad on would, would, would not be subject to the fire station tax.
That is a good point.
Stuff, but. Right, but I, I don't know that they have three stories.
Yeah, I think, uh, building JA is JB.
Okay. I don't think, I didn't think, I didn't think it was, but, okay.
I, I'd have to double check.
Yeah.
It might be two and a half.
Do you wanna say anything about, um, one of, maybe it's Ryan's favorite thing that, like fixing roads, make the, the. Like, you know how the, some of those roads and streets are all kewompist and if you. Fix some of those roads around your development. You know what I mean, like the one behind, uh, Walmart?
Twenty Seventh Street.
Lost internet?
But, but that, but those are county, right? So we don't.
No.
Walmart's not.
I wish it was county.
So, I mean, can we say that? I mean, if you.
I really like that, we have a lot of these.
Realignment of private drives.
Whatever.
For smoother traffic flow.
Or better appearance.
Or building their roads to county standards.
Or whatever. There's, there's a good objective one, Timmy, I like that.
Yeah.
It's like, it, it's, it's clear when you hit the threshold, county standards, boom, you know? But also connectivity might be a separate one. Well, I would think that would be at least medium.
Yeah.
If, if not higher, I don't know, but you guys. Um, relatedly, what about? Connection to a public road that's not Twenty Eighth Street or connection directed to a traffic light or something else like that that is for the access of, to the site?
Like, cross access.
Help you, uh, or cross access, yeah, or stub streets or. I like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
That, that's gonna help the density be managed if it happens.
We did some, uh, connections off from Broadmoor down in Caledonia so that the residents in these communities didn't have to come out onto Broadmoor. And back into their development, so we did some, some side connectors.
I like it. Yeah, that's, that's very important. And developers are like, that is a big community money, so it's a good one to have on the list here.
We're now, and then they complain.
All medium.
Every now and then.
Alright, you all have what you need to kinda come back to us.
I think so.
I think so.
Good discussion. Are you, are you good with this? I know you had a couple of concerns, I wanna make sure we get those addressed while we're here.
I don't know, I think I made myself clear.
We got it, we got it.
You don't want apartments, right?
Yeah.
Forgot that drift.
Yeah, there was also a concern with the, on the map.
Yeah.
With the, um.
The water and sewer.
We asked them to talk to the engineer about that.
Did that happen?
Not, not, not the last two weeks, we'll get on it.
Not the last two weeks.
Okay.
Alright.
And that, that line, the boundaries on that map are not representative of where water and sewer is, I think that map shows it going down Whitneyville. It starts at Kahoon and Cascade, so I, I, I think it would be. Great to talk with Eric and move that line a little bit more, that southern line to be m- more, uh. Cohesive with what actually exists, is that.
Yeah, and I know there were some, some issues in the far northern area by the Grand River too. Where there, we had stuff that exists that's outside the boundary, so we'll make sure, we'll make sure to fix, we'll go with Eric, get the specifics and fix that, yeah.
Yeah, there was some stuff that was drawn there as not being in the utility service area, which actually has the utility.
Yes, we'll fix that.
Would you all be agreeable if, uh, we had them send the proposed map to Timmy and I, uh, ahead of the meeting and we can. Provide any additional feedback, he and I have been kinda talking about it before it gets here.
That'd be fine.
That'd be good.
And can you bring a map in person here we can lay out on the table?
Yes.
But can you get it to us, say, three days or more before the meeting and that way he and I can convene and give you feedback?
Yeah, that should be no problem.
Okay, you good with that, Timmy?
Yep, thank you.
Alright, super minor idea, can we stop calling Patterson and Sixtieth four quarters? Can we just call it Patterson and Sixtieth?
I know, I feel like it's the five points in.
Yeah.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, we can do that, Patterson and Sixtieth, that's just wanna.
Yeah.
Keep it at that, okay?
Awesome.
Southwest, maybe.
Yeah, I think.
Hospital has purchased over there, like.
Yeah, we have it.
The idea that once existed is southwest mixed.
Okay, I think it's sort of like the four states.
I mean, that's what's going on, right? We stand at that corner and it's kind of what Cascade, Caledonia gains, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Sixtieth?
Yeah, this was very good, this was very creative.
Yeah, love it.
Yeah, that's well done.
There you go.
Thank you.
Good job. Thanks, you guys.
Alright, while they're packing up, I'm gonna move to Article Nine, does anybody have any old business?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, sir.
So. What's, did I hear through the grapevine that Wormies got kicked back to us or the, the township, uh, puts them on? No?
It's done.
It's done.
It's done.
They just got a permit for their first hoop house and signed their stormwater.
Timmy.
Yeah, that's all done, those guys are good.
Good. Good.
Agreed to everything we. Maddie and I went out there and walked that, I had at the township meeting and went and spoke, cuz I mean, it, it, there was a lot of work ahead of that one.
Good, cuz I was gonna be upset if they kick that back again.
It's done.
Good.
Done.
And it's done and it's done right.
Good, yeah, and Wormies was awesome through the whole process, as far as I'm concerned.
They've been great people.
Yeah.
Well, very responsible business owners, like I said, my major concerns with the whole process was the next business owner that came in.
Yeah.
Has any, has everybody been out there?
I gotta get out there, but Maddie, I.
Oh.
I, I think we should keep in touch with those guys in early spring, like, have a, a, kinda party, but a, a.
Community.
Party, and we invite all the neighbors and get them out and get them to walk.
Is absolutely gorgeous out there, I would encourage, you know, it, it's just God's country, it's beautiful. I would encourage anybody to go out there and walk it, it was, yeah.
Once they get permission from the owner.
Without a doubt, yeah, yeah, thank you, Scott.
Throw that out there.
Yeah.
I have two questions.
Yes.
The design review committee?
Yes.
Do you know the members of that?
I'm on that.
Rissy.
Okay, I'll get in touch with you then.
There's more than just me though, right?
We have an old Twenty Eighth Street application.
Yes, from the planning commission, I'm the only one on it.
Okay. And then.
One time in, I think, the last fifteen years.
What's the committee called?
Design review.
Village, I, I think, well, it used to be referred to the.
Yeah.
Village.
Village Design Review.
Review Board, I think is what it was originally called.
Okay.
Committee, something like that, but now we're kinda using it for a little different twist this time.
Okay.
What was.
It hasn't met for fifteen years.
Oh, so we're like bringing it back from the.
I shouldn't say fifteen years, it's met like a couple times in the last.
Here we sent.
I think two thousand six it met, two thousand fifteen it met, but we have an application on Old Twenty Eighth Street that was applying where that. Building was demoed at sixty-six, sixty, Old Twenty Eighth. So we will need to meet.
So.
Just to.
Exciting.
Is that where they went from, then, then their two story to one story?
Yes, they've decreased their size and are asking for exceptions to the design standard.
All right, he's like, yeah, I did administratively approve with Brian the, the two to one, so you have.
Yeah, so they just submitted that to me, so I'm just trying to get the design committee together for a meeting.
Good call.
And then the Meadow Brook Business Park, we've had some people reaching out about. Drive-throughs and if those were previously prevented for some parts, I can't remember which phase off the top of my head, sorry. But wondering if drive-throughs would now be considered down in the Meadow Brook.
Hmm, there's a Meadow Brook Review Board, is there not? I believe there is.
I think there is.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if you guys had any context to drive-through discussions back then.
To discuss that before it came to us.
Okay.
Start there for sure. Where's the Meadow Brook?
I was just.
That's at the Four Quarters.
Sixtieth and Patterson area.